Got a call to order, meeting of the Corahville City Council, 30:00 PM, Tuesday, November 26, 2024. Roll call, please.
Knutson?
Here.
Vogel Zhang?
Here.
Huen?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Goodrich, I'm sorry. Since you were mayor, I was skipping you.
That's all right. We're all present except for our mayor and the city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and several staff in the audience. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Wen and seconded by Vogel Zhang. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Community comments are next, and this is a time for community members to speak to us about items that are not on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Do we have anyone who would like to speak with us this evening? Okay, next we'll move to the audit report with Dustin Opez from Bergen KDB LLC. We're glad to have you with us, Dustin.
Happy to be here. Okay, good to go?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Dustin. I'm with Bergen KDB. I'm a senior audit manager, and this is the 2024 audit presentation. So if any of you have any questions while I do my little spiel, feel free to interrupt me. I have such a passion for city finance that if nobody stops me, I'll just kind of keep going. So the first couple of slides that we are going to look at are the different reports that we issued. The first one being the independent auditors' report. It's where we give an opinion on your financial statements. In my, in my opinion, it's the most important thing that we, we give you, right? It's essentially what you pay us for, to come and test, examine, issue an opinion on your financial statements. So we do give an unmodified opinion, which is the best we're allowed to give as your auditors. It says that everything in your financial statements is fairly presented in all material respects. The next report is the government auditing standards report. So because you're a city in Iowa, we're required to look a little bit closer at compliance with laws, contracts, grant agreements, and internal controls. And so we had no internal control findings related to that test work, so a completely clean report from that aspect. And then because you expend over $750,000 in federal funding, we're required to look a little, pick on a couple of your larger federal programs every year, and no findings related to that test work either. So another clean report for the city. The last one is an Iowa legal compliance report. So the Office of the State Auditor gives us a series of checklists to complete as far as looking for compliance with specific state statutes. And so we did have three findings for 2024. It's the same three findings we had last year, related to expended amounts being excess of the budget. And so in Iowa, you have to not only be under budget in total, you also have to be under budget in each function. And so in 2024, we, we noted one function was over the budgeted amount. Deficit fund balances, they, you do have a couple of funds that are, have significant deficits, so that we're required to note as well. And then there, there were a couple of inter-fund transfers that were not approved by the city council that were done. And so required communication there as well. These next few slides are going to look at your general fund, so this is your main operating fund. So total fund balance in the general fund decreased 4.9% to 17.7 million, which is the third largest in the five years presented. So your, your fund balance call, policy calls for about 35% of spending in unassigned fund balance, and you're at about 43% for five months, so right in line with that policy. The, the categories here jump around a little bit, so that, that gets a little bit confusing. So unassigned dropped $4 million, but part of that was because committed increased $2 million, or $3 million. And that's mostly related to commitments for, for various, for various city programs and things like that. So that's an internal commitment. It's not an external restriction. It's just more tracking by the city internally. Total fund balance decreased 921,000. Looking at the revenue side, most of this stayed pretty consistent year over year. The one thing I wanted to draw your attention to was your intergovernmental revenue decreased 6%. That's related to those ARPA funds or the American Rescue Plan Act. You received those in 2022 and 2023, not in 2024. So that was, I think, and we'll see that on the next slide. I think it was about $1.5 million. So this looks at your general fund sources of revenue over the last five years by type or by source. So your hotel motel taxes decreased related to decreased activity. Intergovernmental revenue decreased $1.6 million related to those ARPA funds going away. License and permits revenue decreased slightly related to decreased building permit revenue. And then use of money in property increased about 500,000 related to just better market conditions and getting a better interest rate on the money you have in the bank. On the expenditure side, we first look at function by function, and percentage-wise, everything was almost identical year over year. Again, on a five-year picture, overall year expenditures did increase 1.5 million. General government increased 300,000 related to increased insurance costs. Public safety increased about a million related to increased salary costs and health insurance costs, as well as increased equipment purchases. Culture and Rec increased about a million dollars related to increased contributions to the Tourism Bureau and increased salaries and benefits and some additional equipment purchases. Health and social services expenditures decreased. You can see this little baby spike here. With some of those extra ARPA funds, you made additional contributions to social service organizations. So that was a one-time thing, so those came back down for, for fiscal '24. Next, we look at your, your enterprise funds. So enterprise funds are different than your, your general fund in that the, the charges that these funds bring in are expected to maintain operations. And so we give you a few different pieces of information here. So we give you revenues and expenses, which are the green bar and the blue bar. And then we give you this brown bar, which is total income or loss from operations. And then we, we'll call this dark green or light black, is income without depreciation. So depreciation is a non-cash expense. You're never going to have to write a check for it, right? But it does represent your capital replacement costs. So when your water lines wear out and need to be replaced, sewer lines, it, the theory is if you've been covering depreciation for the last 10, 15, 20 years, hopefully that cash is sitting in the bank and would indicate that you would have to borrow less for those repairs and maintenance and replacements. So looking at the water fund, so this fund has been positive with and without depreciation for all five years. Expenses stayed flat year over year, increasing about 1.2%. And then revenues increased 7.5% just related to increased usage. Next, we'll look at the sewer fund. Again, kind of the same picture. The, the brown bar for the sewer fund is, is higher, so it generated a $1.7 million income, including depreciation. Expenses stayed flat, decreasing 0.2%. Our revenues increased 479,000 related to some increased usage. The parking fund, outside of this one little blip related to COVID-19, has generated a positive income in four out of the last five years presented. Revenues increased related to some increased contributions from the North Neighborhood Association, the IRL North Neighborhood Association, and then expenses increased slightly related to owing the University of Iowa, some more funds than you did last year, related to that agreement. Now, we get to the hotel fund, which I, I know that, I've talked about it when I've been here before, but this fund has struggled for the la, for probably more than the last five years presented. But so this has had a negative income in the last five years. Unrestricted net position, which is the amount available for spending, has been negative for the last five years. Overall, it, it didn't change year over year very much, but there, there were, there were transfers into this fund of $3.9 million to, to sustain these operations. So total revenues were up about 17.8% related to increased booking activity. But on the expense side, they were up 21.3% related to that activity, as well as starting depreciation on those, those renovations, as well as kind of the interest costs on the new debt related to those renovations. So just one, again, something to keep an eye on. Next, we look at the, the tax capacity levy and the rates. So we start with the, the tax rates. Identical year over year and, you know, very consistent over the last four years. Total levy increased about $200,000 or 1%. And that's me. So if there, this is how you would get ahold of me, if there's ever anything that I can do to make your life easier or all this stuff to make it more understandable for you. Government accounting is wild, so I'm definitely, here's a resource for you all. But I'll open it up to any questions if you have any.
Any questions? If not, we'll, we'll move on.
Mayor Protem, I'd just like to thank Dustin and Ann and the finance staff. They've done a really good job of continuing to improve the audit, and I think if you compare this to last year's and some of the actions there. Also, this is the earliest I think we've had the audit done in, for a long, long time, which helps us in several other areas, including budgeting and with our bondholders as well. So it's just, things continue to improve, and just appreciate Dustin working with us on these areas. And we've got a couple of other big things coming up over the coming years, and we've been including Dustin now so that we know how that will impact our audit. For example, at the arena, this'll be, this coming year, December of 2025, is when the new market tax credits all collapse as part of that federal program. And so there's a lot of different ramifications to our books, and Dustin's already started helping us with those kinds of things. So we just appreciate all of the effort put into this. It is on our website. It's at the library if you want to see a hard copy, or here at City Hall as well.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll move on to well 16 improvements. The public hearing for well 16 improvements, environmental information document, is requirement to receive state revolving funds. We have Scott Larson, our city engineer, with us for this public hearing. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. As noted, this is a, a requirement that we read this summary into the record. And this is a summary of the environmental information document for Corahville Well 16. "The purpose of this project is to make improvements to the drinking water treatment facilities to enhance their reliability, provide redundancy, and increase capacity to safely and reliably provide drinking water to the city of Corahville for the next 20 years. Several alternatives were considered for this project, including expanding an existing well field with additional Solerian wells, Solerian and Jordan wells, or alluvial wells, constructing a surface water intake and phasing out the existing wells, or connecting to a regional treatment facility. The selected alternative consists of expanding existing well field with additional Solerian and Jordan wells. This is the lowest present worth cost of the options and also provides the additional benefit of maintaining the current raw water quality blend, thus removing any concerns about the need for treatment process changes. The project site was selected for the availability of land, as well as minimization of the impacts to the environment. The proposed project includes the construction of a new Solerian well, well 16, and approximately 5,280 lineal feet of raw water main to connect to an existing transmission main. Additional proposed activities include installation of electrical service, a standby generator, controls, site improvements such as grading and seeding, and all necessary connections and opportunances. Minimal tree clearance will be completed, and fill will be placed to provide proper grading. Federal, state, and local agencies were asked to comment on the proposed project to better assess the potential impacts to the environment. A list of the agencies contacted is available. To date, no adverse comments were received from any agencies or the general public. Summary of reasons for concluding, no significant impact. The project will not significantly affect the pattern and type of land use, industrial, commercial, agricultural, recreational, residential, or growth and distribution of population. The project will not conflict with local, regional, or state land use plans or policies. The project will not impact wetlands. The project will not affect threatened and endangered species or their habitats, provided that any tree cutting is conducted between August 1 and August, October 11 to avoid impacting endangered bees. If any state or federally listed threatened or endangered species or communities are found during the planning or construction phases, additional studies and/or mitigation may be required. The project will not displace population, alter the character of existing residential areas, or convert significant farmlands to non-agricultural purposes. The project will not affect the 100-year flood plain. The project will not have effect on parklands, preserves, other public lands, or areas of recognized scenic or recreational value. No historic properties will be adversely affected by the proposed project. However, if the project activities uncover any items that might be of archaeological, historical, or architectural interest, or if important new archaeological, historical, or architectural data should be encountered in the project APE, the applicant should make reasonable efforts to avoid further impacts to the property until an assessment can be made by an individual meeting the Secretary of the Interior's professional qualification standards. 36 CFR Part 61. "The project will not have a significant adverse effect upon local ambient air quality, provided the applicant takes reasonable precautions to prevent the discharge of visible emissions of fugitive dusts beyond the lot line of the property during the proposed project." 567 Iowa Administrative Code 23.32C. "The project will not have a significant adverse effect upon local ambient noise levels, surface water quantity, groundwater quality or quantity, or water supply. No significant impact to surface water quality, fish, shellfish, wildlife, or their natural habitats is expected, provided that an NPDS General Permit Number Two for stormwater discharge associated with construction activities is obtained and the terms of which are abided by."
Now that the document has been read, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us about this? Any written?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from our council members?
I'll just mention that we will have a regular public hearing coming up for plans and specifications, setting the bid date, et cetera. This is just kind of that first step that we had to go through.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to consider a motion to receive, approve, and place on file the environmental information document for the well 16 improvements.
So move.
Second.
First by Hi and second by Peterson. And we just need a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, anyone against it? I don't know quite how to say this. I need to learn. Thanks. Okay, it all passes. All ayes. Thank you. We'll move on now to number seven, Fifth Avenue North End Improvements. And this is also a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. And this is for the construction of new hammerhead turnaround and drainage improvements at the north end of Fifth Avenue, and bids are due Tuesday, December 10, 2024. Consider the resolution, please.
Resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing the posting of the bid letting, all for the Fifth Avenue North End Improvements. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Second by Vogel Zhang. Discussion? Were there any written comments?
No.
I'm assuming there, were there in, anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us about this? Thank you.
Did we officially open the public hearing on this one?
Yes, I did. I did, and I didn't close it before I did the resolution. Excuse me. We'll close it, and we've had the resolution read, and now we just need roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
All ayes. Resolution passes. Number eight, Ridgeview Part II, another public hearing. And this is, Part II is a 16.62 acre development without Lot E, which is 9.75 acres with sensitive slopes, creek, and mature trees, and will be dedicated to the city of Corahville to be incorporated into the city's overall West Land Use Area Green Belt and Open Space Plans. The rest of Part II is 27 lots with an average density of 1.62 dwelling units per acre. We'll first hear the Community Development Department report from Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and city council members. And thank you for that summary. Ridgeview is actually 114-acre subdivision with immature residential types. It'll be 943 residential units when this subdivision is, is done. Part II is 16 acres of that. The, the homes will have 30-foot front yards, five yard, five feet for side yards, and 30-foot setbacks for rear yards. And the parkways will also be lined with trees, and there'll be a temporary sediment basin in Part II to manage stormwater until the permanent stormwater features west of Lucas Avenue are completed by the city. So staff did review the proposed site plan and final plat. Staff finds that the site plan and final plat are in conformance with the applicable development standards, as well as the West Land Use Area Master Plan and the Ridgeview Master Development Plan that was recently amended by city council. And staff finds that the final plat meets the requirements for preparation and filing. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their November 6 meeting, and by a vote of six to zero, the commission recommended approval of the PUDB site plan and final plat for Ridgeview Subdivision Part II. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing on this proposed PUDB site plan for Ridgeview Part II. Anyone like to speak to us on this? Any written?
No written.
No written. I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution, please.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Ridgeview Part II, Corahville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
All ayes. Resolution passes. And E is consider a resolution approving the final plat for Ridgeview Part II, Corahville, Iowa.
Resolution approving the final plat for Ridgeview Part II, Corahville, Iowa, is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments?
Are they already working on this?
They do. They have a grading permit.
They have a grading permit to get started even before we...
That's all correct.
I thought I, I drove by it last night, and it's like, I've worked on it.
We can issue grading permits as long as they have their construction side runoff permits, their stormwater pollution plans in place, and they have an approved master development plan, which they have. So, yeah, so seeing moving dirt, they're, they're okay to do that.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye. All ayes. Resolution passes. Number nine, Corahville West, Part IV, Lot One. This proposal is for a 4,300-square-foot dental building with 39 parking stalls to be constructed on a 1.2-acre parcel on the northwest corner of Merchant Street and Jones Boulevard. Consider the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 2024-1008, an ordinance amending the Corahville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corahville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Corahville West, Part IV, Lot One, from C2 Arterio Commercial District to CPUD2 Commercial Plan Unit Development Two District. Introduced to third and final consideration by Councilmember Wen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Ordinance is approved. All ayes. B, consider a resolution, please.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot One, Corahville West, Part IV, Corahville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Wen. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution approved. All ayes. Number 10, Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. The Federal Transportation Authority, FTA, requires any public transportation system that receives federal financial assistance under 49 United States Code, Chapter 53, to develop, draft, and certify a public transportation agency safety plan. Okay, consider the resolution, please.
Resolution adopting a city of Corahville, Corahville Transit Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan in accordance with 49 CFR Part 673. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Discussion? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution passes. All ayes. 11, Street Finance Report. This report itemizes the allocation of funds used to construct, repair, and maintain city streets. Resolution, please? None?
Resolution approving the fiscal year 2024 Street Finance Report, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Wen. Discussion? Questions? Roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution passes. All ayes. 12 is financing. The city council is required to determine whether it will appropriate funds for bond payment by December 1st of each year. Consider the resolution, please.
Resolution appropriating payment of certain annual appropriation debt service instruments and directing the finance officer to certify tax increment financing debt to the Johnson County Auditor is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
All ayes. Resolution approved. 13, Interfund TIF Loans. And this is a $90,000 advance for financing projects from the Corahville Oakdale Urban Renewal Area Tax Increment Review Fund. Resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing internal advance payable from tax increment revenue funds for the urban renewal project costs, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Discussion? Questions? Roll call, please.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution passes. All ayes. B, consider this resolution. This is a $180,000 advance for financing projects from the 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Area Tax Increment Review Revenue Fund. Resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing internal advance payable from tax increment revenue fund for urban renewal project costs, introduced for adoption by Council... for urban renewal project costs, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. Questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zing.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huhn.
Aye.
All ayes. Resolution approved. Number fourteen, Law Enforcement Mental Health Liaison. This memorandum of understanding with the Coroville Police Department, North Liberty Police Department, and Johnson County Sheriff's Department is for sharing the cost for a law enforcement liaison to improve outcomes on mental health-related calls for service and divert persons who need support and treatment from the emergency room and jail. The mental health liaison will now be an employee of the Johnson County Sheriff's Department. Consider the resolution.
Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding in connection with a shared mental health liaison for the police department, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zing, seconded by...
Second by Peterson. Questions or discussion?
Just remind everyone that this position has been in place in conjunction with the three entities for some time. This just changes who that person reports to. It gives them, enables them to get more of the law enforcement data and information than they were as a non-employee, and then also enables them to strengthen some of the benefits for that individual as well.
Yeah, I had the opportunity of going to discussion about this, and I think this is great because, you know, it keeps people sometimes that have mental issues shouldn't be going to jail. So, you know, this is great for the community to keep. Sometimes people have, you know, periodic mental issues that may be a one-time thing that, you know, they should be forgiven, I guess is the word I'm looking for, or, you know, look at or give somebody to talk to, a chance for somebody to talk to them and find out what's going on with them. Because I think, you know, this isn't just an issue in Coroville, but all over the United States, there's too many people with mental issues winding up in jail and in prison, and I think it's a definite, great, it's a great thing that our community is doing. So I would just, just wanted to give my support for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to have this liaison.
I'm having a hard time putting words into my mouth.
You're in good company. No, you're, appreciate you speaking up. Roll call, please.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zing.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huhn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution approved, all ayes. Consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor Protem, I would like to ask Council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to double B.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Wynn, seconded by Vogel Zing. Roll call, please.
Vogel Zing.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Huhn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
All ayes. And this motion is approved. City Administrators Report.
Yes, just a couple items, Mayor Protem. We've got a lot of projects that are starting to come to a conclusion before the winter changes. Oakdale Boulevard is almost completed out to the new school, and so that should be opening in the next few weeks. Fifth Street Water Main is quickly coming to a conclusion, and so there's a little bit of work left there, but that'll be done yet before winter really sets in. And the Isle of Lights is coming up, December sixth through the eighth. There's a lot of activities involved, and I just encourage people to come out and participate in those, including, starting with the community meal on the sixth, and ending with the Isle of Lights on the streets on December eighth. So lots of things to do then. And I would just like to welcome back Chris Deal, the better half of the Deal family.
Don Deal's daughter.
And former Assistant City Attorney.
There you go. Welcome back.
Ninety-eight, ninety-nine, longer than that, with the mall.
Yeah. I had a couple things, just a reminder that it is Thanksgiving coming up, so the city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And so, of course, trash pickup will be different next week, then, the second through the sixth of December. All trash, recycle, and yard waste will be picked up one day later. And you might note that this is the last week where they will be picking up yard waste and leaves for the rest of the winter months, so get all that stuff out next week for pickup. Also, I just, you know, it is great to see all that's going on with Isle of Lights and so on, and our website has all the information that you need. That's at coroville.org. So just take some time and snoop around there on the website, and you'll find lots of information. Also, boards and commission applicants are due the thirteenth of December, so we need some more people who are willing to serve on boards and commissions, and you can find that on the website also. Thank you. Attorneys Report. Besides your daughter being here, do you have any other great news?
Well, Kelly's already introduced her, so I don't have anything more to say, except I'm happy to see her.
Thank you. Committee and Councilmembers Report. Let's start with Royce Peterson.
Well, it's good to be back. I apologize for missing the last meeting due to work obligations, but, yeah. Had the opportunity to go out to the Coroville Lake Lights. Is that what it's called? The Lights at Coroville Lake? Is that right?
Lights at the Lake.
Lights at the Lake, yes. Our local sponsored one of the scenes there, so got to go out for their plug-in ceremony. And, yeah, it's great as usual. I think that's a great organization that serves the birdhouse, hospice house out there. If anybody's ever had any dealings with them, I unfortunately had to deal with a family member being out there, but I can tell you they do a great job. And I have told my wife that if I ever end up in hospice, that is where I would like to be, so. But, yes, I wanted to say happy holidays to everybody, and don't forget to enjoy time with your family. And I can't go without saying, go Hawks! Friday night, right?
They're playing basketball right now.
Yeah.
Five thousand people there.
Okay. How it went?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I want to remind the general public that the food pantry will be closed Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so if you need food, please come tomorrow from four to six, or give us a call and get food delivered to you. Also, November is Native American Heritage Month, and so I wanted to take this moment to acknowledge that the land that we call Coroville, Iowa, was built upon the homeland of many indigenous people, and our community exists on land that was stolen from the sovereign nation of Masawaki, Iowa, Kikabu, Osseti, Sakowin. I urge you to take some time to learn more about our neighbors and celebrate who they are and the contribution that they have provided in the face of violence, oppression, and Sorry, I have a hard time saying that word. So this Thursday, November twenty-eighth, I invite you all to observe truth given where we celebrate generosity, gratitude, and community. Happy holiday to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Vogel Zing, please.
Just want to just echo what Royce said about the holiday lights at the lake. It is a great, a great event in our area, and the birdhouse is a quiet and tremendous asset in our community, so just want to echo that. I also want to extend thanks to everyone on the city staff that was involved with putting up all the lights, all the streetlights. I mean, that just, every time I drive down, it's one of the things that I really love about living in Coroville is just the Christmas spirit, and it's a great, great thing to do. I just want to extend my thanks to everyone in city staff that's been involved with brightening up our community. I really appreciate it. And also, I want to extend my wishes for a very blessed, happy Thanksgiving. We've got a lot to be thankful for and grateful for in this community and in our country, so just take a minute to pause and appreciate and be grateful for all the bounties that we have and for family, so enjoy the holiday. Thank you.
Mike Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Just kind of echo what Rich just said. I was biking home by the IRL and passed a pedestrian who was taking a picture of the IRL with all the lights there. I assumed it was because they thought it looked really nice, so echo that. I did want to clarify something. We had talked about yard waste, which you said was coming to an end. I thought we were going to try to continue it on a part-time basis of some... There's a, they're putting up a form on the website that you'll fill out to request to come get it picked up versus just driving down the streets. Weekly, yeah. So you'll still have that service on a Friday upon request? Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.